Now that we got the NSS officials standing behind me, I thought I'd mention something that might surprise you. Actually, the headquarters of the NSS is here in Huntsville, Alabama. How many people knew that? The National Space Biological Society is up on Blasky Pike. And they have a cave. Does anybody have any members there on the other NSS? Bryce? Alright. Well, they explore space too. It's just underground, inter-space. So, that's one kind of exploration we're not going to get into, but they actually have a cave underneath their facility, their headquarters building.
It's a biological preserve though.
This is true, so there is limited access. There is, I'm talking about the Hilton people here, a cave under this building. So, I was thinking about telling you all not to be stomping too hard, but I was trying to scare you all off, and I wanted to wait till this thing was over to tell you about it.
To the hole.
Well, the funny thing about, now, there definitely is a cave also in the courthouse, which is a big building. And when they were testing the Saturn V F-1 rocket engines here, those things made so much racket and vibrations that there was some concern about people in the community about maybe just losing our courthouse or some structural damage to some buildings due to cave-ins and things like that. But fortunately, we didn't have a problem with that. But to give you an idea of what it was like, I was a kid growing up in a rural community close to Albertville in Boaz, Alabama. I understand some of you here are from Florida and Boaz, a lot of places. I don't know how that happened, but anyway.
Your birthplace, that's why we know that.
Oh, you're the one. No, it's more than Gunnarsburg, but anyway. Oh gee. The funny thing, yeah, yeah. The funny thing there is that being 70 miles away from Huntsville, I could hear those engines when they fired. That was impressive. I remember as a kid walking out and just listening. You'd hear this low rumble, and I knew the rocket engines that were sending men to the moon were firing, and it was great. I loved it. And, you know, when I was a kid, you know, we had these visions of moon bases and stuff like that. So, I was a kid, I'm only one year older than Glenn up here on the table. So... He's gonna beat you up when this is over, I don't know. He's picking me too. I should watch it, especially when I'm standing in front of a back.
I don't usually pick on the elderly.
Anyway. Anyway. You know, we really had expectations, great expectations for where we were going at the time. I always thought I was gonna spend my honeymoon on the moon when I got married, you know, some base. Plus, I think we got a little work to do to get there, so you're charged to do it. And with that, we're gonna kick off this town meeting here. I'm sure you already know all these people, but just for the heck of it and going through it, I'll go through their names once again. Lori Gobber, she's the executive director of the National Space Society. She's the one who takes all our grief up in headquarters. Along with assistants, her husband David Brant, sitting back here in the back. And President again, Charlie Walker. We have our Chairman of our Executive Committee, Mr. Alan Waller, and Director of the NSS Policy Committee, Glenn Remus. Ladies and gentlemen, I give you these fine officials of the National Space Society.
First off, we have a request for anybody who feels the urge to do one more thing for the cause. Over there on the edge are tables filled with letters that need stuffing in envelopes. And while you enjoy the pleasures of the town meeting, you can be doing something with your fingers, and they would love to have a few volunteers to load and stuff some of those envelopes. We promise to call on questions from over in that corner first. Basically, this is gonna be a question and answer session. If you have a chance to ask anything you want to know or complain about anything you want to complain about, tell us what you think. And I think probably we'll start with questions. Who wants to ask the first question? Alright, go, Alan.
Alan, I understand that Glenn, at the Policy Committee meeting on Thursday, there was a lot of discussion about focusing the society's efforts on a scenario that places a lot more emphasis on solar power wireless transmission to Earth as one of the focus. And can we hear more about that and where the society may be going in trying to make that more of a focus for why, the economic rationale for why we ought to be going into space and to the moon, I digress.
Yeah, well, there are a couple of reasons. It's not any change in policy to support solar powered satellites, of course. We've supported solar powered satellites since, actually, before there was a National Space Society. It goes back to our predecessor organization. But the time seems ripe to make a bigger push for a couple of reasons. First of all, it was essentially impossible to get the regular Bush administration interested in any particular new energy technology. In fact, Jim Baker was once quoted as saying very prophetically back in the early 80s, "We have an energy policy. If anything gets in the way of our Persian Gulf oil, we send troops over and we take it back." And that was pretty much energy policy at the time. So, it was very difficult to inspire much enthusiasm in that, and they were interested in other space stuff we liked. So, it sort of got back burning. Times have changed now. There's much more concern about the environment. There is much more concern about depletion of resources. And there is also much more interest in wireless power transmission, which by the way is the new space movement politically correct term for solar powered satellites or power beamings. Wireless power transmission unparred a whole lot of people. The technology's matured a little bit. You know, it's electronics. Electronics gets better and faster every time you turn around. And there's now a lot of work. The Japanese, as some of you may know, have successfully done an experiment earlier this year in which they launched two spacecrafts and beam power one to another. And it just seems right to really make a push. It looks like the environment's much more receptive, and it looks like the technology is such that we can really go somewhere. And the strategy really is to try and get some early demonstration projects. Peter Blaser calls it the terrorizing strategy. I think it's extremely sensible. Where you first demonstrate essentially horizontal power being between islands and that sort of thing. And you work your way up to a stage where you'd be beaming power back from space. If Mark Hopkins weren't chained up down in the cave, he could report to you that one of the things that we've done through our lobbying arms, space cause, is get the ball rolling on directing some of this defense conversion money, a very large pot of defense conversion money. And in cooperation with the International Association of Machinists, who are looking desperately for new aerospace jobs for all their laid-off members, we're working to get some of that designated for solar powered satellite research. And so, we're making a big push, and that's essentially why. I'm sorry more of you weren't able to be at that meeting, by the way, because it was quite productive meeting.
Yeah, following along in that direction, as you also can tell, the work group was formed yesterday with the goal of putting Floridaville, which has created demonstration solar powered satellite tryouts. And if there are any ways the society as a whole can get across to the administration, to White House, where our work group would be working for Congress, the same message is, the main national critical need based for Floridaville right this fall next year is the energy issue. Are there any ways they can do that, or put it directly through the door?
Certainly, that's something that we absolutely intend to do. And as I said on Thursday at the meeting, this is, in some ways, is sort of an ideal Al Gore-type issue because it combines sort of high-tech stuff with environmental correctness, and it's even got a wonderful lift the third world out of poverty play to it. And all of these are good arguments, and my favorite phrase of Henry Kissinger's is, he once said about something, "It's a good argument, and it has the added advantage of being true." These are good arguments, and they are also true. And they're arguments that we intend to use. And in fact, I spoke with David Anderman last night at some length, in the corridor before the police came and kicked us out, about this very topic, and we're going to be working together on this issue to try and make it move and make it a reality.
Did they kick you out for talking about the topic?
Yeah, yeah, they were sent by Exxon.
Bryce?
At the Space 92 conference, Gordon Woodcock was talking about solar powered satellites. Mentioned the Department of Energy study done about 10 years ago, where they picked a rather bad scenario and proceeded to prove that it wasn't practical. But part of that study, he said, was that they admitted that times change, the technology changes, and that the study should be revisited in about 10 years. So, it's about time that we thought we should push on them to revisit that issue.
Absolutely, absolutely. Although, you know, the sad thing is that the Department of Energy is a branch of government that is one of the least interested in solar powered satellites at the moment. They're primarily interested in, well, it's about half-nuclear and half-fossil fuels. They are getting more money for renewables, however, and they may have to start figuring out ways to spend it constructively. Although perhaps I'm over-optimistic in that view.
Kind of another connection with that, recently up in Oregon, we have the Montomb Falls Trojan Nuclear Power Plant. The safety procedures are just terrible on it, and it's a disaster. Might we be able to get private power companies interested in studying this?
Yeah, well, I'll forego the obvious joke about Progen's containment. Yeah, the Electric Power Research Institute and a number of other utilities do have some pretty interesting programs. Where they're more likely to be interested, I think, although I haven't had discussions with them, so I can't say firsthand, is in the terrestrial power beaming technologies. And I think that's the way to sell it to them at this point. Of course, that's the thing we want first, so that's okay.
Next. Any other questions?
I have more organizational question. Here's a conference chapter workshop to discuss. There was a workshop to discuss setting up the mission and objectives of a chapter and helping them plan what they do. And the point was made that that has to tie back into the mission and the objectives of the national organization in order to be effective. My question is, does the national organization have a charter that you could give to the chapters to assist us in the development of our mission and objectives?
Well, the answer is yes, absolutely. In the organizing documents and the bylaws of the organization, it's pretty clearly stated. Plus, there's in the work of the Policy Committee and the Legislative Committee before, the name's changed to Protect the Gilding. There's plenty of documentation that's been chewed upon by both the leadership and the national leadership and the chapter leadership during the past three or four years that elaborates, it talks about the vision, goals, missions, objectives, and elaborates on all that. So, there's plenty there.
The core principle, of course, is the creation of a spacefaring civilization, skulking communities off the earth for, for at the soonest possible time. Some people say within our lifetimes, but every time I come to these conferences, I wind up talking to somebody about nanotechnology who assures me that by the time I'm old enough to need it, saying about Greg's age, nanotechnology will grant me perpetual youth and health anyway. So, I want it sooner than that. I really do think that that's the central organizing purpose of our organization. That, of course, is the destination. The next question we have is how we get there. And that's a question that the national is looking at through the Strategic Planning Committee right now. It's also something that each chapter has to think about, which is you have to say, given the strengths that we have, what can we do that contributes toward this goal? And I think one of the strengths of the chapter system is that that's a different answer for every chapter. Harry Reid, who I earlier described to his face as a god among men, so I suppose I should describe him again, has discovered that his chapter's strength is in generating mail, and they've got the stuff to prove it over there. For some other chapters, it's going to be something else. It may be direct political action. It may be space art creation. And that's something not to be underestimated. How many of us were brought into this by early exposure to space art? It may be something completely different. And each chapter, I think, has to decide what its particular strength is in serving the overall goal and how best to go about it. And that's why we have chapters, I think, is so that a million flowers can bloom.
Organizationally, we do have a chapter starting kit. And I'd be interested, for those of you who started chapters, if that was at all useful. Does anyone have an opinion on the chapter starting kit and actually the whole chapter handbook? It's an extremely detailed document with sample press releases and ways to write letters to the editor and write your congressman and explanations of how to describe L-5 and all kinds of things. Is this useful? I mean, we send those out to people interested in starting chapters.
We have one of our conferences editing it, but we find it useful. I'm interested in knowing how many chapters actually go back after a couple of years people have been reading through that you can keep getting a lot of ideas from the chapter handbook. I've heard people saying, "Well, no one reads it." It doesn't look too much, except for the chapter starting kit.
Except for the chapter starting kit?
New chapters read through that when they get it.
Right, but you're right. The handbook is like, you know, a research document to go back to. It was developed throughout probably the first 10 years of the organization. David, how many people request chapter starting kits? And do you get many comments on how useful it is?
Well, we get approximately eight or 10 a year for new chapter startups. Out of that, you might get a handful of those chapters actually formed. So, I do send out chapter starting kits. I don't get an awful lot of response about their utility. I'd love to hear about it. There has been discussions with the chapter's assembly and with some other ad hoc bodies about revising and adding sections, updating. So, if anybody else has any comments or suggestions along that way, please pass it to myself or Dave Anderman or any of these others who have discussed changes to it.
Yeah, I think some of the older chapters ought to be made aware that the handbook had been updated. Until I saw the new handbook, the one that I had in my files was back in '86, and there's been some phenomenal changes in the handbook. I've been reading it in the evenings there, and it's well-done. And I just wish I had known that it had been available because I hadn't seen it until I made a trip out to DC about a month ago.
Good point, but we need to get your socialite in DC so you don't have to read the chapter handbook at night.
You know everybody.
You know how ready?
You've got a son that needs a serb, you know.
We ought to call on some of the people who are stuffing envelopes. If anybody over there has any questions or anything.
All talk a little loud.
Repeat the questions when people ask questions.
I got a comment on the NSS questionnaires that go out periodically. It seems to be the same format, the same question. They're not always changing as the space program and politics.
You mean the annual surveys?
They're not so much, not always annual, they're maybe sometimes they seem quartile on a quarterly basis, but they're pretty much.
The question concerns the NSS questionnaires, and he feels they haven't changed enough to keep up with the times.
Yeah, we really only have the annual space policy survey, so if you're getting something quarterly, it's... I don't know where that would be from, but we do send the survey and then send the results. So, those would have a striking similarity between the two. Hello, is anyone out there?
And they are updated. They are annually updated.
The survey this year probably had about seven new questions from the last one. We do continue question 10, which divides up $100 between the various programs because there is something to be learned from judging year to year how people are changing. And unless you have the exact same wording, statistically, you can't get that. We also deliver our testimony to Congress, and they like to see trends year to year. Are people still wanting to cooperate with Japanese? We used to have this survey question about international cooperation. No one wanted to cooperate with Russia. Very few people. Now, you've got more people wanting to cooperate with Russia than with Japan. And so, you do, for statistical reasons, want to keep some moving. Yeah, one of our problems with new programs, like we added the SSTO on there both last year and this year, is how it ranks with the different launch systems, is it takes a lot more explanation because it isn't, you know, really one or the other. How can you compare systems that aren't really being developed for the same purpose? And that's one of the problems with these surveys. You know, we use them as fundraisers. Let's face it, that is one of their purposes. And so, you can't go into too much detail. We try to do that with the magazine. And obviously, we've written detailed articles about a lot of new programs. Then clearly, that drives the survey. If people read about a program six times in the last year and they've never heard of another one, you know, that's probably gonna be the one they check. But I think it is something we need to strive to continue to do. I usually run the survey questions by Glenn and the Policy Committee and see what they have to add. And so, it's an interactive process with the headquarters staff, the marketing people, and the Policy Committee.
I'll say one question that we added this year was a question asking what you have done, what the recipient has done in the previous year to support the cause. And I thought that was very interesting, and the response on it was relatively strong. One thing I would like to say, I'm very eager to hear it, but one of the things I really liked about this conference, I'm not saying anything about his age, one of the things I really liked about this conference is it's really focused on doing and not talking. And the table over there is indication enough of that. And that's a trend I'd like to see continued in future surveys and a lot of other stuff that we do.
Karen?
I wanted to comment on that particular question also. And I was real discouraged by the results that we got back because, and maybe it's just, you know, a bad time for me and my age because I'm a lot older than Greg. But it seems to me that there are, we are a part of this organization. I don't think enough of us are activists. I think too much of us are trying to do what Glenn does so well, policy, and accept what an almost professional or a person who knows exactly what's going on has determined. And we think that we know better in many cases because we've got only a little bit of the information. I think that what we should do is accept that the Policy Committee thinks it's very important for us and be actively supporting it and be activists rather than trying to do other people's jobs. Sorry for blaming guys, but I have to say that.
I have to repeat this one briefly. Essentially, she's saying that she feels that people should be doing more activist and less attempts to second-guess the Policy Committee. Is that adequate somewhere? Yeah.
Can I disagree with that for a second? I know I'm an idiot to open my mouth here. I want to say two things about that. I mean, we do have a Policy Committee to decide the direction of the organization, and there is a point at which people do sort of need to decide a decision's been made, or at least understand why it's been made. I don't mind people disagreeing with what the Policy Committee does, what the organization does. What I would like, though, is to hear from people on what they think the organization ought to be doing in something that is addressed to the Policy Committee, something that actually lays out reasons why people think we're wrong or why we should be doing something that we're not doing or whatever. I love to get stuff like that. I think that's terrific. And, you know, figuring this stuff out is hard. I'm pretty smart. The people on the Policy Committee are pretty smart. We all think about it hard and have done it for a long time. We have a whole lot of real tactical skills. I used to be a lawyer to bill my time out at $250 an hour. You know, I know how to do lawyer stuff. But we don't have any monopoly on brain power. And I'd be the last to suggest that what people ought to do is shut up and do what the Policy Committee says. But I would like to see people's energies put in a constructive direction. And I think that what I'd like to see is people producing arguments for their positions and trying to win us over, and also accepting that, well, you agree with what we do or not. We're trying hard, and we're trying to do the best we can for the cause. And I, in return, will send the same courtesy to everybody else. And one thing I also have liked about this conference is it seems to me there's been a lot more of that kind of a spirit as well and a lot less of some of the flaming and backbiting that have occasionally marred previous conferences in that regard. It is possible for us to disagree on a lot of these issues. And, well, actually, we could all disagree and we could all be wrong on some of these issues. And we just have to have a little bit of intellectual humility on this sort of stuff and recognize that you play the cards you're dealt, you take your best shot on these issues, and you hope you're right enough to make a difference. And I think we have been right enough to make a difference.
Cheryl?
Maybe one way to appropriately care some of that input would be for the Policy Committee to let the chapters know through Inside NSS, let me plug you for that. When you are going to be considering an issue and kind of a call for input, then let you guys grind through it, and then when you come to a position paper, again, and notice in Inside NSS, just to let people know that there is a position paper and this is roughly the direction we're taking.
Which, of course, will get easier as NSS, Inside NSS comes out more frequently.
That's swell. I always set this thought that's arm-twisting for me to produce articles for Inside NSS, which I will agree in front of witnesses to do. Also, on the other stuff, that's absolutely fine. It only works for some kind of issues. A lot of stuff we do has a very short fuse, and we do it by a teleconference on a couple of days noticeable less. But that's certainly not true for everything we do, and you're absolutely right.
But even then, after the fact, notice would be, I think, pretty good.
Cool.
Yeah, the, one of the survey questions they asked, you know, how involved do you get? Did you fill out a survey last year? Did you write a letter last year? I thought that was a pretty good question because it caused me to reflect on what I'd done in the last year which wasn't much as far as being active in the organization. So, I think that having those kind, having that question in there really tends to get people to think about it. And if we have a trend over the years to the answers to those questions, that might be worthwhile publicating to, you know, respondents to see that, yes, there is an increase in activism. I just want to say that I think it's a good idea because it causes people to reflect on what they've done themselves.
Did anyone hear the question or did it sound like it was a remark? Next. Yeah.
Really, to all of us, I think there's been a lot of discussion over the weekend about the phone tree and various problems with that. And there's been very suggestions on how to get it running, whether we should have something just in space cause, just in NSS, for both of them or whatever. And I'm wondering what your policy, what your views are on what we should do to do the phone tree since indeed this has supposedly had some ethical effect.
Actually, it still does. I'm sort of amazed how effective it is because it's in somewhat poor repair. But on the other hand, it's not. The phone tree's really changed since the early days. It used to be, you systems analysts types, I guess, will understand it. It used to be sort of a very hierarchical system. It used to start at one point, and it used to cascade down, branching at different stages through multiple levels. And it was really a phone tree. It's much more sophisticated, but also much less highly organized than that now because of the use of the nets to convey a lot of information. I was one of the ones who pioneered the use of the nets for phone tree information a number of years ago. And it was quite apparent at the time, Greg, you want to talk about this phone tree stuff? Go on. It was quite apparent at the time that one of the things that was gonna happen was the very character of the phone tree would change, and it was gonna be less hierarchical, and we were actually gonna have less control over what happened if we made that change. And we did it anyway for the speed and the reach that it gave us. Nonetheless, there's a lot of repair that needs to be done. One of the things we're trying to do is get mailing out with people's new member packets inside that will recruit people for the phone tree and try and get a much larger percentage of the membership involved. And I want to pass it over to Greg, phone tree coordinator, who is the god of such things.
I'm doing better without that thing. I didn't quite hear the question. Can you hear over there? Not well? I didn't quite hear the question. Have you had a question? What was it exactly?
I was, basically, there's all sorts of different options up for how we need to go about getting into the phone tree. Do we want just the space cause or the NSS one? Both either? How do we go about placing it? That's what I'm trying to confuse.
Well, my opinion is that whatever space cause does to the phone tree is space cause business. There is some options that we discussed at our phone tree session the other day, though, that could be explored for maybe a corporate phone tree that has maybe a dual structure. It's gonna take some work and discussions with.
It's going to take some work and discussions with Mark Lockins and a bunch of other people. So there's a lot of things that have been thought out there, so it's kind of hard to say right now.
But one of the comments a lot of people mentioned is that even when the phone tree works and it goes on test on the line, no one calls. Very few people actually make the calls if the senator took flight. You're just...
One thing we do have is an output measure. It's hard to measure the phone tree's effectiveness, but we've succeeded a number of times. We activated during the presidential primaries, and we heard from some of the candidates. I've actually got a letter in writing, Jerry Brown, who did it, about the hundreds and thousands of phone calls they got. We activated on the White House, and we've gotten the same kind of reports. We've generated a lot of phone calls and so on. And that's why I say I'm actually surprised at how effective it's been given all of that. I feel I'm filled on in you here.
I'm the National Space Cause Phone Bank Administrator, and I think it's space cause that's generating all that noise.
Well, I happen to think we generate a good piece of it.
Prove it.
We have done it before and will do it again.
Yeah.
I'm not sure we can make a distinction between where all the same organizations improve.
But that's, I think, why that question is very important. Well, and you're doing a lot of duplicate work.
Yes.
And you might also know that there's a lot of other people who are not associated with either of our organizations that also are. Because, for example, at my work, which happens to have a space station-related project at it, there's some things that come down through prime contractors and so on that at least encourage people to call. And I know we had a very good response from people at my company calling that was, I helped organize it too, so I guess we could...
In coordination with the phone tree?
No, not, I was not in coordination with the phone tree, but we did do a lot of calls.
In answer to Karen's point, I will say there have been times when we've activated the phone tree selectively without the Space Cause phone banks, like for example on the Patents and Space Act, where we've seen a good response. So we have a pretty good idea that it does work surprisingly well. Larry?
Let's throw a hint to people back here. We seem to have more chapters than we have phone tree community nodes.
Larry points out that we have more chapters than we have phone tree nodes, which, of course, he is intending as a hint for those of you who may be in the one and not the other.
That's a very good hint. One of the things coming out of our workshop yesterday was two actions. One, to go to the chapter's assembly regional coordinators to see if they'll be willing to help beef up the structure of the regional phone tree directorship. And the other action was go to the chapter regional coordinators. That sounds like the same thing, but it actually isn't. We wanted to have a more redundant, help the phone tree at each level so that during the high football season, which happens to be when everybody wants to go on vacation, we can reach everybody. So we have a lot of things addressed in that area, but we probably will need to restructure the phone tree to fit the chapter system, and then it can flow down to those chapters. But we need the chapters to get involved. Right now, we've got a problem in that we need bodies in the phone tree, we need people, and the quickest source of information for that is the chapters. So I'd really appreciate it if all the chapters would step forward and help us do that. And then you'll see bigger responses from our phone tree. Yeah, it's a skeleton right now of what it used to be, but give you a quick example of its efficacy. I think I spoke earlier today about a call to the president. Back in 1987, before the prime contracts were left for space station, the space station vote was going through the House Technology and Science Subcommittee. And there, I believe, was three, four, two against, and there was another, three people that were swing votes. I mean, these guys had no idea which way they were going to go. No, I think it was like two for and three seemed to be against, if you come to think about it. No, this is several years ago. But anyway, we concentrated the whole phone bank on these three individuals, and two of them voted in favor of station. And they said they did it because of all the phone calls they got. Now, that was before we had a contractor community out there pushing lobbying for it. Now, there is a contractor community that will respond to some degree when these kind of things come up. But we have had our efficacy. And now hopefully the contractor community can take care of itself. But still, our voice counts, and we're going to say what we think is important.
I wanted to mention that, as Glenn talked about, the networks, the computer bulletin boards being so important now, one of the things that happened at this conference, which I think is really going to help us, is that May Joel Barrett-Roddenberry got very excited about things like the single stage to orbit and supporting the redesign space station effort. And she is going to hold a meeting back in Hollywood with the other actors of Star Trek and get them to support this effort. And then we can get that message with the signatures of the actors out through the Star Trek nets and the Star Trek bulletin board, which is a whole other community that I know we often try to reach. But with their networks, I think it'll be a lot more responsive with her message, which is going to be, without these programs, Jean's message will never come to pass.
I just wanted to say that we do, at least space cause does, we put everything on the nets too. And I'm assuming some of the phone bank people do too, that we do use the Star Trek nets right now. They've been very, very good in helping us, letting us post those up there and pushing it along. So being able to put Angel's letter up there is going to really help.
One thing that we use, especially when we appear at Star Trek conventions, is just a little thing drawn up, a quote from Jean Roddenberry, says, "We cannot have a Star Trek universe." Why do you use the word milieu? But I don't think that's the opposite, right? We cannot have that type of universe without a strong space program. And it's been effective and getting our interests.
What did you send to all those chapters? What? So what did you send to all those chapters?
Because I didn't originate it.
Larry's letting us know of a project that he's... Who was it? Who's done this? One of your chapter people?
One of our chapter people. I don't know.
Who's put up a poster at the different conventions that I know a lot of you go to saying that the Roddenberry, that the Star Trek message won't come to pass without the real space program.
Basically, what I'm saying is, take advantage of whatever it is, if it's science fiction or if it's featuring Heinlein, and use a quote from him to push our cause. If you go to a spirological thing, there's probably someone that talks about change that has a space application, use it to your advantage with the other orbit.
Yeah, they found that in orbit.
Is there anyone who hasn't got the chance to ask a question yet who would like it?
Yeah, okay. I just want to point something out. So I've been over here for the past couple of days. I kind of noticed that the only people around here that you all seem to be having are your high-tech engineer, umpteen job-type person, okay? You don't have anybody that doesn't have no technical degrees and all that type of... You don't have no layperson like me. I don't have no big-time job, you know? I don't have no big-time position waiting for me except a nice little job that looks like a deal key. You know? I haven't seen anybody that's, you know... Also, you all not speaking, you know, like a little language, like common sense. Where is the... No one's not speaking any sense, making any sense. So for a person like me, I don't know what the hell you all talking about. Someone makes sense. Tell me what the hell you all want. Then I can support you all. Somebody say something.
There is other people that, I'm a post supporter, I don't know if you heard Charlie's speech yesterday at lunch, he was talking about that same thing. There's not enough, too much on how, not enough on the why. And I agree with you, there's too much emphasis on the technical. I attend these sessions and I go, ugh, you know? So I understand perfectly well what you're talking about. And I think we should do more about it.
In your handbook, maybe address this by putting your glossary in the handbook.
You're talking about the chapter's handbook?
Yeah, probably.
Oh, or in that conference handbook.
Well, go to the book, Captain. Does everyone there have access to that handbook?
The comment, the question is, the comment is, gosh, it'd be nice to have a glossary of terms so that everybody knew what was being talked about, what SSTO means, and both the words and the concept and the idea. And then the question is, is there such a thing in, to begin with, the chapter's handbook and other basic documents, right? Yeah. Yeah. An interest, yes, there is. But it needs to be elsewhere. I mean, and we need to, you know, when we stand up in front of a group and start talking about Mars Direct and we start talking about the technologies involved, and we need to define terms. We need to be sensitive to the gentleman's, the gentleman's concerns. I mean, he's obviously here because he's interested. There's probably a few better things to do for some folks or at least more interesting things to do on a day off than be here. I mean, let's be honest with ourselves. We're here because this is what we're interested in the most, but not everybody is, and I'm really pleased that he's here. But we should be sensitive to that, not just talk to ourselves, but talk to others as well. And especially, just like any good church, and, you know, in a way, I don't want to delve into the religious here, but in a way, I think of us as the church of what's happening up there, you know? And we need to welcome the folks that are coming in for the first time and encourage them to come back. And the only way we can encourage them to come back is to let them know what we're really talking about, not to befuddle them with the short form that we use to just get a few more words in every minute. So, you know, we need to define terms maybe when we stand up in front of ourselves and our guests and start talking about tech stuff. When we do, when we need to, we need to say, you know, oh, by the way, SSTO means. It's a nice courtesy, and it's going to be tough training for all of us to get used to doing that. We're going to need to try to do it more.
So what does it mean, Charlie? SSTO?
But I don't want to recycle all the last four days. Besides, the gentleman who has kind of asked the question generally is standing right next to the program manager. And Dr. Gall would be more than happy to tell you what single stage orbit means.
Actually, hold on a second. I think he's got an excellent idea in terms of the glossary, and perhaps where that ought to be is a sheet or two in conference registration packets. Are the people from Toronto here, I don't see Paul, can we arrange to put just a couple of pages in every packet for every registration? It'll run through, some of them are common abbreviations and ideas.
NASA produces a very nice glossy publication that has every acronym you can possibly read.
How big of a...
It's available from the government printing office or from NASA directly. I don't know the...
Can we see to it that something like that gets into the registration package for conferences? Because that's really where you're going to run into the most heavy problems. Yeah?
Just to make this gentleman feel a little bit more comfortable, would you ask all the people that are from a non-technical background to stand up? Because I don't think he's aware that a whole lot of the people here are...
Excellent point. Would all who are from a non-technical background please stand up so he can understand that he's not alone in this room? There are quite a few.
And just let me add that all of you, not just for our new members' sake, but for everyone here, if he's willing and has the time to stand around after the town meeting, introduce yourselves.
John Goss, yeah, right.
It's kind of a silly point of information, but about a month ago, somebody successfully said to NASA, "Stop using all the acronyms." I don't know what the impact of this is going to be, except it'll take the engineers a hell of a lot longer to talk to each other.
It'll silence NASA for about two years.
Bob, do you...
I'd like you to ask that question again, but this time instead of asking non-technical, how about non-aerospace?
Actually, that is another point. We've suggested that this time all those who are from a non-aerospace orientation stand up, a professional background. Which is, I think that's the point. This organization, while it obviously needs a certain amount of technical expertise, is essentially for ordinary people. There are professional organizations that are people who make their living only at this. And most of us, frankly, just have a lot of interest in it.
I'd like to add to that. There we go. I think that's what makes us special, and it's what makes...
I think that'd embarrass the hell out of you.
Speaking of our best supporters, absolutely.
That's one of the things that makes us special. It's one of the things that makes us different from everybody else in this field. And it's one of the things that if you can convince politicians or other people that you meet with that it's true, absolutely amazes them. Laurie and I were at the White House one time, meeting with people, and they obviously assumed we were some kind of industry group. And when Laurie said, "Well, actually, only about 5% of our budget comes from corporate contributions, and, you know, we're really a grassroots group." They looked a little surprised, said, "Oh, but most of your people work for NASA and stuff, right?" Said, "Well, no, actually, they don't. Most of them actually have other jobs and just really care about this." And the people kind of, "Oh, it's a whole different world." That's what we have that nobody else has. We're not talking about this because we want contracts. We're not talking about this because it protects our bureaucratic church. We're talking about this stuff because we want results. And we're the only organized constituency that feels that way and that cuts across all the grains of self-interest and so on. And that is what makes us special.
Need to advertise that more.
You're right.
The gentleman with the view?
Besides the glossary, which unfortunately I don't think too many people will read, but it's necessary, a bit of instruction for people who are speaking. Start, devote two minutes to any presentation of putting it into context so that anybody listening says, "Yeah, that's why, that's where it fits in the global scheme." It's two minutes out of your presentation, but it means that the rest of the audience who isn't, just already know your material, knows where it fits.
I don't, did everybody here morning, okay, the point over at the home, really, let's get down and get a dumb table over there, are shuffling and did here... The, Laurie's comment was a suggestion that for clarity to audiences, that when we speak about a subject, that the first thing that we do is to spend a couple of minutes, five minutes, maybe summarizing and establishing a context for what is to follow so that those that are sitting there can, if they don't think the context is what they want to hear, they can get up and go away. But more particularly, specifically, of course, to understand what it is they're about to hear. And let me suggest, Paul is, Toronto's over on the side, and Paul, that might be a good suggestion in terms of organizing individual sessions, specifically encourage your session organizers and chair people next year that when they talk to speakers and they're roping up speakers, emphasize that as something that each speaker should do in each session and on each of their topics, to start out with an abstract and a summary and a context. You know, down here in the southern U.S., there's a kind of little phrase, you gotta, you know, when you want to get a message across to them, you do like the southern preacher does it. You start out by telling them what you're going to tell them, then you tell them, then you tell them what you told them. And you might get a point across.
You have a question over there? Yeah. I think each speaker should have a handout, which will give them, and they probably need depending on how much time they have, an abstract, a summary, or an abbreviation if you're in a society.
Yeah. The comment is, each speaker should have a prepared summary and, if necessary, an abstract. I think that's probably almost always necessary, certainly in technical sessions, to pass out, to hand out at sessions.
Greg?
Just one way to comment, that at both of the rallies, the NFC rally and the Columbia State, I think called in New York City last year, both cases, we did have votes, I had people come up to me and said, look at our group and said, "You must be working for Grumman, aren't you? You all must be Grumman people." And, you know, we're various stripes, but just to give a point, yeah, that's a little important information to get out. And we're really grassroots and not astroturf.
The point was, everybody heard the point? Everybody heard that? Okay. Somebody said, "You stuck an envelope the wrong place, it's in your ear." The comment was that at rallies last year, that the people walked up and made the comment to lots of the demonstrators, must have been from Grumman, must have been astroturf. And the point had to be made that, no, we're real folks, we're grassroots. And the point had to be made that, no, we're real folks, we're grassroots. You know, and I think, this is a comment that these, that observation, that fact, that happening, and lots of other comments and things that we all run into daily, including Glenn and Laurie's discovery at the White House, that they couldn't imagine that there were real people there thinking about space.
They learn better.
That's, and that's the point. I mean, they've got to learn better. But my comment is that, you know, we've got, here's another, here's another matter we've got to proselytize on, and another point that we've got to educate everybody on. Yet this culture of ours in this country, domestically in the U.S. anyway, I think it has, I hope, peaked, and maybe I hope we're going down the other side of this, a culture in which everybody, we all look at each other and think that we must do everything that we do for a special interest that's industry or institutional or bureaucracy-oriented, that it's not, we're not doing anything for ourselves and for our community future and for humanity. And of course, and that's not true. You're all here demonstrating that that's not true. You're doing, you're here, and I dare say, every one of you are here because you believe in improving your family's life, your future, your future life, humanity's existence, and, you know, "Oh, by the way, yeah, I'm looking to make a little personal gain out of it along the way," and whatever. There's always levels, but it's not just that industry focus, it's just not the astroturf that we're working for. And we got to keep, we got to get that out. You know, we assume that people think that we're just people, that people, that institutions don't know that. They think we're other institutions, and that we're lobbying for an institution's sake, and that's not the case.
Greg, you have a follow-up?
I just thought, that is, and, and, what is, does why is, why should you publish an astro? Some kind of information, if you've got, as to, as a percentage is aerospace money, and what percentage of the people are aerospace engineers and aerospace?
Yeah, we could do that. I think we need another survey as far as the professions go, but we certainly have the budget information immediately. I'll do that in my column, look for it. I'll make my pitch.
A real good note on the, on the, a good place to stick, not programming, the program book, how your comments, you know, a paragraph, what do you, that is not, call that, but it is, but it's not really.
The comment was a suggestion that in the program book, that there be a summary of speakers' and session content and what speakers are going to say, and that abstracts really.
Ask, ask the speakers to provide.
Yeah, ask the speakers to provide them and encourage them.
I think Greg may have a comment to that.
We did that.
I know.
We did that. We got three or four.
I know. It's real tough.
And with that, we sent out two or three melons, and some speakers somehow, some of them fall through the crack even getting out, but, when you got 140 speakers, you're asking to come, and you're asking them to pay the wrong way to get here, and then you're asking the registration fee on top of it, and then they come, that's pretty amazing.
Greg, I understand. Is there a publication of abstracts and summaries available?
Yes, there's a publication of abstracts and summaries available. I think I have it in some conferences and.
There's just the video and audio tapes of the entire event, and you can order those from Minnesota, from Ben, right?
The answer is that there's video and audio tapes.
Just video?
I can really know audio tapes. I will hopefully have them available, like, in the next year, four weeks, and this all of a sudden, I shot. There are other people here, I refer you to them, to tell me what they shot. We're going to try to compile this back to you, and you can, that's in the future, inside NSS, but.
Thank you.
Dennis Bell, Space Lines Editor, Gelsprich, Space Society Chapter. I've already talked with Ben and some of the other recordists, and I'm going to be compiling a list from their list, so in the overall thing, and then it would be postable.
He's compiling a list.
Inside NSS, as to what exactly is available.
Okay. He's compiling a list of what, the videotapes that will be available, which will be published inside NSS, which if you haven't subscribed to, you certainly should, it's terrific.
Let me just real quickly make another suggestion that comes to mind. When I've been to set conferences of all kinds before, and there was not audio tape or even papers at the time available, and I really wanted to know what somebody had said and have it down in print, I would call or write the author and ask them.
But we don't even, in the back of the program, we don't have addresses. You can't always.
Well, she points out that in the program, there's not addresses, certainly not phone numbers for authors and the like. Ask the folks around us, around you, I mean, will, or even bug Greg a little bit more when he comes back on vacation in a year or two, as to an address of somebody. You really want to get with somebody, network around, and there's, we'll know, somebody within two or three shouts from you will know who, where their author addresses, phone number.
But Charlie, he is making point, there's reasons, there's just ways to do it, we don't have to be on the, we don't have to.
We'll put the conference committee up.
Yeah, I think you have a good answer.
Continuing on this topic of giving more information to the attendees, to help them in deciding what track or what particular program they're going to sit in on, because all of us are making an investment of time and money to come here. And I recognize what Greg is saying is all too true. We're asking a lot of our speakers, perhaps one way in which we can pull the information from them, early enough on where it can be published and then provided to the attendees, is to transcribe the conversation. Well, what are you going to be talking about? And then just record it and write it down and send it back to them by fax and say, "This is what we understand you're going to be talking about, yes or no." And then that forms your paragraph to describe each one of the programs. Then you're not asking them to write, to sit down and really try and condense a one-hour talk into a paragraph.
Greg, I think you.
Theoretically, it may be possible, when you got 140 speakers and the list keeps changing, you got different players coordinating, it has to be very difficult to coordinate, it requires an inordinate amount of time. Previous conference chairman here know that one thing conferences require other committees, is just a goddamn amount of time to put it on. So we do everything we can just to get what we get to you out. But, you know, if some conference can find a thing to do, that is a worthy suggestion.
Clearly, it's an act of, for example, I'm sorry, yeah, I noticed Paul's taking notes over there. Clearly, we need to do more if it's possible to do, to give more information about the talks when you can, given the limitations, given the limitations. As we park.
I'm surprised that you can bring your own tape recorder. I did not know this. Some other, I go to national hospice. They take every session, and within hours, you can buy a complete tape of a session. If you just, if you miss a certain one, and you just go buy the tape, then you have, you can buy it all, you can have, they have a special price, even for a complete program to all the sessions.
It has, it has been done in previous conferences. She's pointing out the idea that there often are sales, audio tapes available. I have a feeling we have a direct comment from San Antonio.
One who did it in San Antonio a couple of years ago, did that, made some audio and videotapes, and he didn't make money. He didn't make money.
The answer is, the people who did it did not make a profit at doing it, and so that's why the practice is trying to stop.
You could possibly get someone to do that as a volunteer, maybe.
One thing I want to stress about this, and sort of an odd tangent we've gotten off on in a way, although I hope the Toronto people are taking notes, but one thing you've got to remember about all of this, this goes to every aspect of the organization, including the conference. This is a volunteer organization. You can go to these slick professional conferences where you get these kind of services that are done by professionals, and they charge you a registration fee of $600. That's where that $600 goes. This stuff is all done by chapter people who just rip their hearts out and suffer miserably for years. And by the way, we're soliciting bids for 96. And that goes to every aspect of this organization. We have this tiny paid staff in Washington, and what they're paid is so low that they're practically volunteers. And as, you've just got to remember when you deal with people throughout the organization, that people are doing this in their spare time, they're working very, very hard, they're doing their best, and keeping that in mind, you shouldn't be too hard to please, because it's really not the same as hiring people and paying them 30,000, or 40,000, or 50,000 dollars to put on a conference, which is the way a lot of professional associations that you may have encountered do it.
I'd like to add to that. The thing that we encountered with that for this conference was that we had some bids from some professional videotapers, but they were all at a cost, and it was not an insignificant cost at all. We had none that we found to be reasonable, and they would not take our suggestion that they, you know, they would have certain rights to tapes and so forth, and be able to resell them, because they didn't expect to make a profit, as Dr. Carol Reltor, like you pointed out, was in cabinet in her conference. And so that's just kind of hard to do. However, we do know that we have these volunteers from other chapters, such as the Minnesota group, that come to these conferences and make tapes. Now, sometimes maybe there's not enough of these people to get around to hit all the sessions. Well, you know, that's just the price we have to pay for our volunteer labor. But by large, they did a good job.
I said one other thing to finish that, was, we did do a proceeding in San Antonio two years ago, and we had about a 60 to 70% return rate on the, having either an abstract or a paper in the proceedings. And a lot of that was a result of the chairs of each of the sessions pushing their people or writing an abstract themselves about what they spoke on. And that's still available, by the way.
One service I would like to see in the future, and I'd be willing to pay a small two-digit sum of money for, and that is in the registration, you know, packet or pay 20 bucks, and get a directory of the attendees. If you're a famous person and don't want to get called, you can list your business address. But I know that there are people here from Minnesota that did not come down with my group, and I don't know that, and it'd be nice to, you know, be able to do some more networking that way, in that, oh, gosh, so-and-so is at this conference. I have not had the opportunity to meet all 700-plus people, and it'd be nice to, while this person was there, you know, I can at least have a mailing address to get ahold of this person later. Give either work address, a P.O. box, I don't care, but I would like, and you can get the info from the registration forms, hopefully you've got a computerized, if you send out the second registration, to just make a little one-line directory saying, "This is so-and-so is here, this is how you can get ahold of him," an optional phone number, and whatever else, but to have it available, and then at the end of the conference, having a addendum of the, at the door of registrations.
So it's a suggestion, we have a listing of all the conference attendees available. Paul, I think you have a comment on that?
Yeah, I have, I want to, here's this one first. Matthew, our operations director, Matt Shakespeare here, early on, quite early on, about a year and a half ago, suggested something akin to this, and it was called our Birds of the Feather, where basically you get to meet whoever you want to meet, and that whole program is being put in place, the mechanics of it, but very much to address those issues and point about on this as well taken. We talked about abstracts, yes. Speakers' files, short file, yes. So those two things will be in the program handbook. The other two points of videotaping and audiotaping, we already contracted with a professional audio taper in Toronto, so every session will be taped and available like 20 minutes after the fact for $19 or so. They're professionals, they're going to make money on it, we're not tied into it at all, okay? And maybe a little pricey, but anyways, that's there, it'll take place. As far as videotaping, in fact, we've talked with Ben and his group, we've done a lot of videotaping around here, and it looks like something firm is going to happen in that regard with Toronto, videotape as well.
But if you go to 13 sessions, 13 parallel tracks, I don't have that much of years.
What would videotapes cost of sessions from this session, from this? Has anybody made that decision yet?
Well, I can only speak for my group, but David wants to charge for his tapes, that's his domain, but usually, we've been saying that $15, and I will buy the tape and eat the cost of mailing it out to you.
So it'd be $15 per session?
Per session, if you want a whole bunch, and I can put two on a track, we can knock it down a little bit. I've basically been having them, my business card says, "Write to me, we'll talk. If you've got something I'd really like to get ahold of for me or for the group, or for my groups, we can make deals, you know, like exchange tapes and this or that, or, you know, books, or, you know."
Exactly. Does anybody?
But that would just serve as a starting point.
Ben?
Oh, I've purchased tapes in the past at these conferences, years past it, and it's one of the reasons why I'm suggesting that we put out a little, a tip sheet, a tip sheet for the speakers, because I have purchased tapes before where people in the audience have asked a question, and the person with the microphone says, "Yes, I agree with you." And you never heard what the person said, so repeating the question is one thing that's important, and setting the mic down because you don't like using it is not a good way to work either, because then, then all the people who buy the tapes are not going to get the information that you put out, and you're cutting out a large, large audience.
Yeah, what you're talking about is, of course, the discipline and good, good protocol in a recorded, any kind of public recorded format. It's tough to have all the microphones that one would need to get the comments from the audience on tape as well as on and on it. That's expensive and difficult, and so it's just common courtesy too, to get what you're saying in the way of comments about, from the audience, repeated, on tape, on and on. And at sessions, it's good to, I think at conferences, where you don't have all the instrumentality that are, all the microphones everywhere that you need, so everything's on tape, to have a briefing perhaps for speakers, or a little sheet for speakers that tell them that this is the kind of thing that for the community they're talking to, they should, out of courtesy, do. So you guys know that in Toronto, and I'm encouraged and sure that you'll follow some protocols like that, and it'll help everybody.
We're actually about 11 minutes over the time that we're supposed to stop, so I'd just take a couple more questions and then really quit, preferably for people who haven't gotten a chance to ask yet. Yeah, the back.
You know, what's the status of the proceedings? Is one going to be published or not?
I don't believe there's going to be a published proceedings from this conference, no.
That's still, that's still a matter of thought, but it's not been settled.
That's still a possibility, but it hasn't been settled.
I would be willing to coordinate it if people are interested in following up on that.
We just have an offer of a, somebody who's willing to coordinate it, if there is an interest. I'm just curious, could I see a show of hands of people who might be interested in obtaining proceedings? And you're not committing yourself, but just to get a sense. Okay, so obviously you guys have a conversation. Yeah.
Basic question, if a person writes to the society, what is the likelihood that he will get a personal, non-form letter type of response? And if so, having said that, what factors determine?
Question is, if one writes to the society, what's the likelihood of getting a personal, non-form letter response, and if so, what are the factors that determine?
If you ask a question that is about your membership, you know, like a, you've said your name and you have a question, we actually are looking all those up personally in the office right now. Frank Gilbert, who's here, Frank Weestan is our database manager, and he will speak to you on the phone, a real person, he will call you back, he will write you back. If you write for educational materials, often we do have packets on specific topics, so you might get a form letter. If you write for autographs, Charlie and Buzz, we typically do handle those, these are all things we do for members. Non-members writing, get membership information. Non-members writing, get membership information. General space questions again. We do try and answer those for members. Um, about technical topics, we might forward you to a technical organization, because that is not our role.
Okay, one last question.
As long as I've been into this, I've always had a problem with understanding the ins and outs of corporations and the government entities that are in charge of the actual production of space hardware and space development. And I was wondering if there's some way I could get a hold, or society could put out some kind of glossary of space-type corporations, government entities, polyinterrelated, brief explanation of exactly what it involves.
For those of you who couldn't hear the question, he said, "You're doing a great job, keep it up." I'm really glad that you're here.
Whoever wants to.
The question was, is there a gloss, available glossary or a listing of the various corporations and government entities involved in the space program? It should be noted that we're probably talking about something the size of an encyclopedia britannica.
Which changes weekly.
Uh, which changes weekly, which is part of the problem. Uh, Larry, do you have something to that?
No, I just wanted to ask, you said there's one last question before.
That what?
I just want to ask a question, how many people here are not members of chapters? All I have to say is, you spend the weekend here, if you spend the equivalent time back in your community, either joining or even starting a chapter, you can have a tremendous effect. You either see me, see Dave, uh, call or contact David Brant at headquarters, or even better, you have contacted your regional chapter's coordinator. We'll get you packets of information of starting a chapter, or information of a chapter in your community. Join and start making a difference in your area.
Does, does anybody have any awareness of any such document that the previous question had to ask for?
Na, NASA has technical information dissemination centers that do exactly that. Uh, you have to talk to somebody in the NASA organization, find out how to get a hold of them.
Depending on how wide a variety of things you want to go to, I mean, you can get boxes and stuff, you know.
If you want that kind of information, the best thing you can do is absorb it by osmosis, because it's really quite complex and changing. Uh, the best way to learn this stuff is to subscribe to Space News and, uh, and pick it up. But it takes a while, it's like, look, I mean, it's like any other political thing. It's not sufficiently cut and dried for somebody to just draw your chart. If they did, it'd be wrong by next Tuesday. Ben, you had a...
Aviation week, uh, mid-March, as they're forecasting inventory, initial analysis, uh, pretty much all the inner space, uh, flat tractors, what they do and how to get a...
Aviation week of mid-March, uh, it's a listing that makes you...
The, the real answer is, nobody knows, we're all lost.
That may be the perfect note to end on. Thank you, thank, thank you all very much, and we'll be around if you have any further questions. Thank you.
Before you leave, I'll let you know, we had one of our members coming here who was injured in an automobile accident, and there's a certificate that we've made out to him. His name is Matthew Young. Apparently, he had a automobile rollover, and I hear that, uh, the injuries are such that he may never fully recover. So, we're gonna try to get this certificate to him. It says, uh, "We'd like to wish Matthew Young all best wishes from everyone at the 1993 International Space Development Conference." And, uh, on a higher note, I promised you all warm hospitality when you come down here, and I, I hear the hospitality suite was about warm with a few thousand. We tried to do something about it, but it just didn't seem to work out. I had one person help me in a restroom, and he said, "Gee, we were in there trying to defrost the air conditioner, it froze up," so we were using blow dryers, and he was describing all the stuff they were doing to try to get it working. I said, "Yeah, well, you have to do the same kind of stuff on the way to ours." So, listen, I really enjoyed the warmth that I felt back from you, and just wish everyone safe passage back home. Bye-bye.